Your other hand. Want to get a picture?
Serving for my country, the Pearl Harbor attack 1941, awful news. Today's going to be sixty degrees, what beautiful Connecticut weather announced the radio. All of a sudden, my annoying older brother stepped in and started bouncing his basketball. Stop bouncing that basketball, I'm trying to listen to the radio, I yelled. Dawn, be nice to your brother, warned mama from the kitchen. Peter smirked, and Peter, be respectful to your sister. His smirk faded to a nasty glare. Just then Papa came downstairs. Good morning sunshine. Good morning Papa, I responded. Hey Papa, can I go and play basketball with my friends later today? Peter asked. We will see, Papa responded heading to the kitchen. Mama was setting the bacon and eggs down on the table. I have some news to share, Papa said, once we all sat down. My stomach lurched. Last time he sat us down, he shared that my Aunt Cindy died of a horrible sickness that got passed on to Eliza, my first cousin, who was also my best friend, and she went blind. It was awful, both sets of grandparents died, said her mother. She only had us and our father. Me and your uncle, Uncle George, have received a letter saying we must join the Navy. Our base will be at Pearl Harbor and we are both assigned to the ship Arizona. Eliza will stay with you until we return. There was dead silence. I could not talk. It was like a barrier was formed over my mouth, causing no words to come out. How long are you going away, asked Peter, breaking the uncomfortable silence. As long as they need me, he answered. Oh Chris, no, exclaimed mama. Who is going to look out for you and what if we go to war? I looked frightfully as mom started sobbing. Papa wrapped his arms around her and said, I'll have George Marie. Don't worry, we probably don't go to war anyway. And Arizona is a huge strong ship. I couldn't take it. I wanted to run, run away from this frightening world. I want to run to a peaceful world where there is no war, no adult filter, no violence. Where we can stay as a family and laugh. Oh, don't go, I yelled, finally finding my voice. I ran up to my room slamming the door behind me as he flopped on my bed sobbing. The words of wisdom. Hey sunshine, may I come in? Came Papa's soft gentle voice. I did not answer. Papa walked in and sat at the end of my bed rubbing my back. Sunshine, I didn't mean to make you that upset, he said after a while. When do you have to go? Why do you have to go Papa, I cried, moving closer so I could rest my head on him. I'll be leaving in a week. I'm not doing this because I want to. Believe me, I would rather stay here with you, Peter, and your mama. But I have to go. I'm doing this for you, for everyone out there, to protect them and defend them. It's an honor to serve my country. After hearing that, I felt a different emotion. I felt proud. Proud that my own Papa would risk his life for our country. And with that, I snuck closer to him, hugging him tightly, never wanting to let go. Bye Papa. As much as I wanted never to let go of Papa, I had to. A week later Papa and Uncle George were leaving. Uncle George and Eliza came over. Mom stood in the corner of the kitchen dabbing her eyes with her handkerchief. After hugging, kissing, and talking to Eliza, Uncle George said, well Chris, we best be off. Papa took a deep breath and went over to me. Bye sunshine, he said. I could feel my eyes fill with tears. You help your mama while I'm gone, okay? His voice was calm but also sorrowful. Yes Papa, anything, yes, I said crying. Bye Peter, Papa said, moving on. You are the man of the house while I am gone. Take care of your mom and Dawn for me. Yes Papa, I will take care of them, I'll try to make you proud, Peter responded, tears filling up in his eyes. No matter what, you will always make me proud son, Papa responded. Bye Marie, Papa said to mama. Oh Chris, please be careful, mama cried. I will, don't worry. Papa grabbed his bags. Bye, I love you all, said Uncle George and Papa. And with that, they were gone. Tired and worried. It has been two weeks since Uncle George and Papa left for Pearl Harbor. Two weeks since I've had a good night's sleep. All the worry about Papa kept me up every night. Tonight was no different. I reached over to grab the latest letter from Papa. I was careful not to make too much noise so I did not wake Eliza. I unfolded it in red. Dear family, we made it safely to Pearl Harbor. I've never been this tired and worn out in my life. Sleeping space is so cramped. There is one bed on top of the other. There are a total of thirty-seven sets of brothers, counting us, on Arizona. The Arizona is the biggest ship I have ever seen. I miss you all terribly, I love you all so much. Love Chris. Written November twenty-first nineteen forty-one. Glanced back one more time at Papa's neat handwriting and then put the letter down on the small table next to my bed. Just then the church bells went off, signaling it was midnight. I pulled the sheets over my shoulders and closed my eyes. The news I will never forget. It was noon and Eliza and I huddled in front of the radio for our favorite show, Tom and Jerry. Suddenly the radio started crackling. Mama, something funky is happening to the radio, I yelled to mama in the kitchen. Mama and Peter walked in looking puzzled. Mama sat down in her chair and Peter sat on the arm of the couch. All of a sudden, a man's voice came on the radio. Sorry for this interruption. We come to give you all terrifying news. This morning at seven fifty-five AM, the Empire of Japan attacked Pearl Harbor, a naval base in Hawaii. It was a surprise attack, many ships sank and many Americans died. God bless us all. Tom and Jerry came back on, but I was not in the mood. I turned off the radio and just sat there. I have a headache, I'm going to lie down, and asked mama in a low tired voice. Said Peter, and he went outside to play basketball. Eliza and I headed up to my room. We sat on my bed and started to sob. This is just a nightmare, it's not real, I thought to myself, closing my eyes tight. Oh Dawn, I'm scared, Eliza confessed. When I was going blind, everyone called me brave, but I was not brave. I was terrified. Every day I could see less and less. About two days before I went totally blind, mama died. I hated it. My last moment with mama, I could barely see. I can't lose Papa, I just can't. I wish that came true. A week went by and Eliza and I were in my room playing with our paper dolls. All of a sudden, I heard a knock on my bedroom door. Hey sunshine, may I come in? Papa, I asked. My heart leaped with hope. All of a sudden, the door opened and there was Papa. His hair was long and in his eyes. He was leaning on crutches, one of his legs in a big boot. Papa, I yelled out and ran over to him, started crying for joy. It is okay sunshine, I am home, it is okay, he said. Where is my dad, asked Eliza, and I started building in my throat. He's okay, he's downstairs, answered Papa as Eliza ran upstairs. After one last hug, we walked downstairs. Uncle George was there, he was in a wheelchair and his legs were missing, but I did not care. They had returned. Eliza was next to Uncle George and mom. Mama and Peter were in the corner of the kitchen. Uncle George, I exclaimed and went over and hugged him. After that, they told us the story of what happened and how they were the only set of brothers who survived. So my wish partly came true. Papa and Uncle George did come home and we were one big happy family. Yes, America went to war and the fighting did not stop for a long time. But we are together and that was all that mattered.
Thank you. All right. So, um, I will open it up to the board for any comments that you guys are going to make. We'll start with you, Ms. Rose.
Wow, you know, when we sit here and wonder if we're doing a good job in the Newington Public Schools, that was amazing. So I got a little teary-eyed, not gonna lie, I cry a lot. But one thing I love the most, you can see, is the pride in your moms. I assume your mom, so congratulations, that was amazing, nice job.
Ms. Appertner.
Yeah, completely agree, I'm a little at loss for words, I was so, I felt like I was there. In the story, watching it happen, I feel like this should be made into a movie. It was phenomenal. And a little connection is when I was in seventh grade, I was also in the Yukon Dogs. I won the writing thing, just like you. And that kind of changed my life and I'm still an adult and I still write. And I hope that you always continue to write because you have such a gift. And that was just outstanding, really. Please keep writing and email us, share with us all the stories that you continue to write because I loved it.
Ms. Weaver.
Yeah, well, funny thing, then you'll be sitting up here if you're anything like that. So that was just a really great job. I think one of the things that's so impressive is just how young you are and how well-written that essay was. It's just incredible and I know you're going to give everyone at the high school a run for your money. I'm sure they're classing now in middle school, but I'm so excited for you to take, please take the career in writing classes and just spill the metal water because this is just incredible, incredible work. And I can't wait to be, I mean, you're already like better than the English majors I knew in college, so just gonna put that out there. And I just want to say congratulations as well to have yourself recognized out of here, but at stake, I, that's a really grueling part of it. And I mean, I can't wait to hear about your trip to Yukon, the burdens and how we celebrated there. That was a real treat, and we have this reported for all the public, so they also get this treat. So I'm glad you treated us to that, so congratulations, thank you.
Very good, so online we have Mr. Sharma. I don't know how he'll come through. He can, yeah, he's unmuted now.
Yeah, no. Hi Bruce, I think I got.
Hello.
Hi, thanks. Hey Gabriella, just want to thank you for sharing your beautiful essay. And I hope, I hope you keep writing, so don't give up and keep writing, but thanks a lot for sharing this beautiful essay. Congrats.
All right, Anastasia Yopp.
Hi, I just wanted to say thank you, that was like an amazing story and congratulations as well.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Sharma, if you don't mind, just put your hand down for us.
No, I already said it's a great story, but I just want to commend you on your public speaking. You did excellent with the microphone and very confident, so thank you for that.
Very smooth. Mr. Branda.
Just, you know, echoing what everybody said, but I think when you started to read it, you know, you hear a lot of essays, but I felt like I was there. And for me to feel like I was there in a situation that I had no experience with, but, you know, I'm forty now and we hear all these stories of you being so young and like being able to connect all those little historical facts and bring it all together, tell a story that we felt like we were reading somebody's diary, but then also like seeing it as it happened. And I just thought, it was just such a really great way to take so many different events or bring it into like that whole field and how people were actually feeling at that time, even though there's no way that you could have actually known all of those little pieces, but you express it so well in that essay. So congratulations, congratulations to the family as well, and keep going, thanks.
Just a little area.
Gabriella, fantastic job, your family is clearly very proud of you. Congratulations, you guys too, you raised a daughter. And we're looking forward to hearing what your, what your next story is.
All right, no more comments? Well, we're going to be doing that in just a moment, so if you could, could hold on when we get to that point, then we will absolutely let you speak. Any other board members, everybody's set? Okay, and again, congratulations, that was a wonderful job. My dad was five years old when Pearl Harbor got bombed. So I had a lot of different things from his perspective as a child. And actually, when I served in the military, it was long enough ago so that a lot of the senior veterans that I served with were veterans from World War II. So it was a tremendous time, a lot of very, very dedicated men and women during that time. And your story reflects it very well. It's very good, so thank you. Okay, so now I'm going to move on to our next item. And that is going to be recognizing our school social workers. So in recognition of school social workers, in recognition of your positive impact on students and families and in celebration of school social workers in Newington, and appreciation of your work in helping students achieve academic success. Thank you so very much. Do we have anybody live or?
I do believe in least one social worker.
Okay.
Yeah, and Marilyn is here too, I would like to say something if I could.
Okay, please, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, board members and everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize our social workers. Thank you for your ongoing support of this very valuable position in our school system. Tonight, I happen to be wearing my Life is Good shirt, but sometimes life is hard. And when it is, we are truly grateful to have our social workers for our students and our families. From our very youngest pre-K students, to our students who age out with us when they are twenty-two, the role of the social worker encompasses so many facets of their lives. The school social worker is the family's support and connection to the community and to private additional services. Newington has recruited some of the best in the field. And I join you in recognizing and applauding their efforts and professionalism. There are some social workers who are here with us tonight, so I welcome them to chime in and give any comments that they may have. But I am so proud to have them be part of my team. And every day, I think that, I wish that I could thank them more, but I hope that I do a good job in thanking them in the work that they do because it is truly phenomenal.
Excellent, thank you. And any of the social workers that are online, you're welcome to speak now.
Welcome to Zoom. Please press pound, then enter your meeting ID, followed by the pound sign again.
It's not a social worker.
All right, Rachel Westballing.
Yeah, I'm trying to find the hand and I can't, so my apologies.
It's okay.
But thank you so much for recognizing us tonight. It means so much, and Marilyn, I thank you for your kind words. That means a lot, you know, to us, you know, being, you know, you're our director and, you know, we look up to you. So it's nice to know that you, you know, you appreciate and recognize, you know, our rules within the district. And I went to a communities of practice session this morning, which is had fifty-two social workers, school social workers from around the state, meeting together, actually to talk about School Social Work Month and how there are a lot of districts that don't recognize it. And where they don't feel that appreciation, where it's kind of like, well, you get Teacher Appreciation Week, that's good enough. And so there was a lot of talk about, well, we are, we are specially trained, you know, in a different way than teachers. And we, we serve different roles than teachers and we want to be, you know, appreciated for that. So I just can't thank Newington enough for taking this time to recognize our profession that we've worked hard to train in and that we are so proud to do this work. And it's, I can speak for all of us in the district because I know each and every school social worker pretty well. And I know they're fantastic people, that we approach this work, you know, with our hearts first. And, you know, it's just, there's, I don't think any other place we'd rather be. So thank you.
Thank you. Was there another social worker online?
Several, I don't know.
There are several, okay. Don't see anymore, okay. All right, so now I will go to the board and give you all an opportunity to make comments. Go ahead, we'll begin with you.
Thank you, I was just gonna say, thank you to all the school social workers. I think, you know, especially in the last two years, with additional pressures and challenges being put on our students, you are, you are truly heroes. And what you do, just a value cannot be put on that. And I think that all of our students are just so much better for seeing your faces and for working with you and knowing that there's, there's someone there for them. So thank you so much for all that you do and just know that you, you truly are heroes. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
I didn't even think to log on, so I agree. So it's Westballing, I just have to say, I did a shout out to your husband for the last time, so I think it's a little hard, right? You have done such, you did such a phenomenal job for my children. So the point that you say that the social workers have like a special, like training, like just watching you work with kids and all social workers, it's unbelievable, so thank you for all that you do. And we appreciate you.
All right. Ms. Weaver.
Yeah, just to add on, I just think it's, it's one of those things where we keep saying, like, unprecedented times, but I think there was no better time that you need, we needed someone to step up and it was social workers. Everybody stepped up, but we really needed social workers at that time. And I mean, I just can't think of another time in my history where we could point to so many people who stepped up, but especially who stepped up for the students that needed it the most. And I think, you know, some districts will, will see those differences play out. I think your role as social workers will be a critical piece in that. And how we see lasting effects of this and how we recover from the lasting effects of this. So not only getting us through, getting our students through these past years, but then getting us through the next decade. We really appreciate it. And so happy we could be one of the districts to recognize this and look forward to recognize it again. But we appreciate your work and thank you so much.
All right. Dr. Brummett.
Hold your mic, thank you. And I just want to echo those thoughts and as we recover from COVID and muddle our way through COVID, our social workers have been so integral and continue to be integral as we move forward. Because as I've noticed this year, I anticipate COVID will have impact on our learners for several years to come for a variety of social and emotional reasons. But our social workers step up to the plate every day, they, they reach out to families, they make home visits when it's necessary. They're very involved in our SEL work. So we are very fortunate to have a talented team of social workers. I'm just thrilled that we can acknowledge you because you deserve it so much, thank you.
Mr. Branda.
Yeah, just really quick to add on to that, and actually, Dr. Brummett kind of segued a little bit is I was having a conversation in the hallway right before this meeting and the idea was we're going to reach a point where we like take a breath, right? And we say, what just happened, right? And, and there are people that obviously needed a lot of help, a lot of students needed help, families needed help throughout these two years. But there are so many more kids and even teachers that are going to need somebody to talk to. And I know a lot of social workers just obviously work hard with the students, but they're there for teachers as well during this tough time. And I'm just so thankful that we have such an awesome and dedicated social worker staff and, and that we were able to add on to it before the pandemic. I think we may have got lucky there, but sometimes it's better to be lucky than good. And, but we have a great team and I'm just so thankful for all the work that you do and all the work that you will continue to do.
All right, thank you. I also want to recognize them because I had the distinct opportunity of working very closely to several of them, especially Rachel Westballing. We work together quite a bit and I can tell you that there are a lot of things that happen behind the scenes with our social workers that are never brought out in the light. And the way that they handle our children and the calming effect that they have on them when they really need that. And I think a lot of times they are overlooked. And I want to recognize that as well, that a lot that they do is never seen. But today, we're taking that opportunity to recognize that. So all I want to say is keep up the good work and thank you for your dedication. All right. Very good, so I will move on, I only have thirty more. Maybe I should have Gabriella come and read. Okay. What did she say?
She seconded that.
She seconded, oh yeah, I'm sure you'd all be happy. All right, so the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education presents to Newington Public Schools an honorable mention in the Fall 2021 Bonnie B. Carney Awards of Excellence for Educational Communications Program for its website, Career Services website. So we have this plaque from them. This recognition. All right.
Awesome, so this will be posted here in the.
That'll be posted here in this room?
Celebrates the board's work as well.
Okay, all right, so I think I'm just going to move on. Okay. All right, now we also have from Cabe. It's the Fall 2021 Bonnie B. Carney Award of Excellence for Educational Communications, presented to Newington Public Schools for its broadcasting website. Congratulations. This is fun. This is fun. All right, and also from Cabe. The Fall 2021 Bonnie B. Carney Award of Excellence for Educational Communications, presented to Newington Public Schools for Equity and Inclusion. Congratulations.
This award actually is a tribute to Mr. Farisi, who developed a very high-quality equity presentation that we submitted to Cabe and that is why this award was honored. So this is really toward Mr. Farisi.
So does that mean it hangs in his office? All right, and moving on. From Cabe, the Fall 2021 Bonnie B. Carney Award of Excellence for Educational Communications, presented to Newington Public Schools, Weekly Newsletter Number One. Congratulations. All right, and this one is, this, this will hang in here, I'm sure. So the Cabe Board of Education, Board of Distinction Award for High Standards, Dedication, and Teamwork to the Newington Board of Education, Spring 2021. Yeah. We will allow the new people to enjoy it with us. All right.
They sent it to us, we didn't make the frame.
Okay. So the next item on our agenda will be the Board Appreciation Month Recognition. I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Fletcher. We have a variety of guests on the line who are here to speak about Board Appreciation Month. I think I will start with Mr. Gatos and the elementary school presentation. Are you on the line, Mr. Gatos?
I am here, Dr. Brummett, good evening, everyone. Good evening, board members. This is a wonderful opportunity and a wonderful tradition where we get to say thank you to all of you. It's, it's a lot of work that you put in, a lot of hours and many times a very thankless job to support the students and the staff of the Newington Public Schools. So I am here on behalf of all of the elementary principals and all of the elementary students. And along with me tonight, I have our student council officers from John Patterson. And although they will be presenting, this actually comes from all of the elementary students throughout Newington. So the, we have a group of elementary students throughout town who collaborated with their art teachers. And the students came up with a pandemic survival package for you. You helped all of us get through this and so they wanted to make sure that you all had the same tools that they did. So I will turn it over to, I have our student council president Julia Sheehan, our vice president Max Zawodski, our treasurer Colby Silver, and our secretary Mackenzie Cook. They're here and they wanted to say a few words, so I'll turn it over to Julia, go right ahead.
Good evening, my name is Julia Sheehan and I'm the student council president at John Patterson. Although we are from Patterson, we represent all of the elementary schools in Newington. Joining me on this evening are the other student council officers from John Patterson. On behalf of all the elementary students in Newington, we would like to say thank you for all that you do for our school and community. You worked hard to help keep us safe during the pandemic and we have a small gift to let you know that we appreciate you.
Thank you, Julia, great job, Max, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Max Zawodski and I am the student council vice president at John Patterson. We know that you have a difficult job and we appreciate all that you do to make the Newington Public all that you do to make the Newington Public Schools great. This pandemic survival package was created by the Newington Public Schools with the help of our our teachers.
Great job, Max. Thanks. Colby, go right ahead.
Hello, my name is Colby Silver, and I am the Student Council Treasurer at John Patterson. I know it goes without saying that your job is a very important one for all of the children in Newington, but it is nice that we can take the time to say thank you personally. In addition to things to keep us safe in your gift, you will find a stress ball. We hope this helps you help with your tough job.
Awesome job, Colby. And Mackenzie, finish this up. Go right ahead.
Hello, my name is Mackenzie Cook, and I'm the Student Council Secretary at John Patterson. As my friends have already said, we are very thankful for all you do. In your gift, you will also find plenty of chocolate. This is a well deserved treat for all the hard work that you do.
Awesome job, Student Council Officers. Thank you so much. And board members, thank you on behalf of all of the elementary schools.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Gato and your team over at John Patterson. And I'd like to recognize the other elementary principals that are on the line. I I know I saw Mr. Marisciano, I saw Mrs. Lawrence, and I'm pretty sure Mr. Smith is on there somewhere because he's going to be presenting it a little bit. So without further ado, I'd like to move along to our middle school presentation. I believe representing the middle school, we do have both middle school principals, Mr. Diaz and Mr. Lambert. And I know Miss Siano from Martin Kellogg is also on the line. So I will turn it over to the presenter from that team.
Sure, I'll go ahead and chime in. Can everybody hear me okay? This is Jason Lambert from Martin Kellogg Middle School.
Yes.
Um, and I I need to correct you, uh, Dr. Brummett. Um, it I am here with Denise Siano, and she is the Student Council President. But she is also our retiring outgoing Student Council liaison uh, that we are celebrating quite a bit this year. And uh, we are we are very much bittersweet in in seeing her move on to uh, the retirement stage. And um, you know, so I'd like to recognize that. I'm also joined joined by our Student Council Representatives, Thomas Denapoli and Cameron Pre- uh, Prentice, who are here with me to present to the board. You should have in front of you a little care package from Martin Kellogg Middle School that kind of gives you sort of a flavor of our school spirit and um, and uh, what we are all about at Martin Kellogg Middle School. So um, I hope you enjoy all of the Marty swag that's in front of you and um, give you a little bit of a sense on what Martin Kellogg's all about.
I believe the Marty swag is in this. Oh, that's Wallace. So it's the other bag. Yes, the colorful bag is from Martin Kellogg. Yes, and Miss Siano delivered it earlier. And and to echo Mr. Lambert's comments, she's just finishing up her thirty eighth year in the district. So she has earned her retirement, but we'll get to that at future retirement celebration. But thank you, uh, representatives from the middle school, Martin Kellogg, Miss Siano, Mr. Lambert, and Mr. Diaz. Does anyone else from the middle school slated to speak, or should we move on to high school?
And Dr. Brummett, can you can you hear me okay?
Barely. Can you speak a little bit further into the microphone?
Yes. Is that better?
Yeah, the audio is a little challenging. Um, but go ahead. People at home can hear you better than us.
Oh, okay. Hi, everyone. It's Dan Diaz, Principal from John Wallace Middle School. Um, before I uh, speak for board record, I just want to congratulate Gabriella uh, again on just just a wonderful essay. And um, you know, we're so proud of her, the John Wallace community for her Yukon Writing Award and the fact that she's going to be honored there and she receives a platinum award and will be published in Students Writers Magazine. So congratulations, Gabriella. We're very proud of you. Uh, I'm joined tonight by Kelly Pino, who is our Student Council Advisor at John Wallace Middle School, and also Abby Pratt, who's our Student Council President. Um, so uh, on behalf of John Wallace Middle School, we want to thank the board for all of their work in supporting our students, our staff, and the school community. Um, so um, Abby and Mrs. Pino, was there anything else that you wanted to say to the board?
Um, yeah, I had a little something to say.
Thank you, Abby.
So um, as you know, I'm Abby, and I'm president of the student, JDM Student Council. Excuse the noise. I'm at cheer practice. Um, but to show our appreciation for you, our student council put together the gifts that are in front of you. And through these gifts, we really want to thank you all for what you do for our school and community. We really hope you know how grateful we are for you, and we hope you enjoy our gifts.
Thank you, Abby.
Cute. All right. Does that conclude the John Wallace speakers, Mr. Diaz?
It does, yep. And I'm not not sure if you can see from camera, but I believe you have a nice um, John Wallace Middle School mug uh, for your beverages. Uh, and you also have some treats there. And I want to give a special shout out to Rosie Brindell, one of our school contractors who helped design uh, and create that for you. So enjoy and thank you again for all of your support for um, our school community.
Um, if I could just um, interject here, this is Thomas Denapoli, President of Student Council, Martin Kellogg. I had something to say quickly as well. So um, good evening, everyone. I just, I want to take a moment to say thank you to all of our board members for all you have done and continue to do for all of us MPS students. Throughout every school year, we look to you for guidance and leadership. We especially have needed that during this pandemic. You've guided us through this unprecedented and unpredictable time, even when things got tough. You continue to fight for what was in the best interests of all students in Newington Public Schools. We know your jobs aren't always the easiest, but you continue to do them because you want to build a bright future for every single student in our district. So for that, on behalf of all students at MKMS, we want to thank you once again and say that we appreciate you for all you've done for the students of Newington Public Schools. We also hope you enjoy the Martin Kellogg swag as a token of our appreciation. Thank you.
Well, that's very lovely. Thank you so much, representatives of both Martin Kellogg and John Wallace, Student Council and Faculty Advisors and Principals. Last but not least, we are joined this evening, I believe, by Miss Tigno, representing the high school, and she may include some student voices in her presentation. Miss Tigno.
Where'd she go? She was on earlier.
Dr. Brummett, she had put in the chat earlier that I guess she was having some Wi-Fi issues and was coming in and out. So um, I don't know if she may or may not be on.
Very good.
Miss Tigno is having some issues, but um, Jimmy and I would like to say a few words.
Vidisha, we can always count on our student representatives. It's all, the floor is yours.
Um, we would just like to say thank you. Um, I know that before I was like coming to the Board of Ed meetings, I knew what the Board of Ed did, but I don't think I quite appreciated it as much as I do now that I've attended so many meetings. It's always amazing when Jimmy and I suggest anything and you guys are more than happy to take on any issues we propose, or even just when we share our reports. You guys are always so excited to hear what we have to say and are always encouraging us. And it's, it means a lot to us, and we really appreciate everything that you do behind the scenes. That often goes unnoticed. And I hope you enjoyed the books we dropped off today. There's a little note in the cover on the front page.
Also, um, and Vidisha stole most of what I was going to say, but um, seeing like uh, the awards, um, the awards presentation section of each Board of Ed meeting, it just makes me think like the Board of Ed does a very, very good, a good job in Newington of recognizing its students, recognizing its staff, recognizing each individual part. And I've, and this, this um, and this, this time of year is such a wonderful time because now we get to recognize now you. Now we get to say thank you for, they make you for every time um, you hand out an award to um, the the janitorial staff, um, the bus drivers in Newington, all people who are essential to the uh, the district's function. But uh, maybe are a little underappreciated and um, and so wonderful to see a Board of Ed that really does appreciate each and every small part of its district.
Well, thank you very much, Jimmy and Vidisha. We appreciate you uh, pinch hitting for Principal Tigno during technical difficulties. It's a true team effort. And um, last but not least, I'd like to personally thank the Board of Education. It's a brand new board. Uh, we had, you hit the ground running when you're on the Board of Ed. You you get sworn in and budget season is right there. And um, you know, this was not an easy budget season, but I made note, and I've already shared this with Dr. Fletcher, that the board deliberated very purposefully and diligently and very civilly came to a good, a positive outcome for the board's budget and really wanted to preserve, you know, the staffing here in Newington Public Schools. So for that, I really appreciate that because that affects everyone on this call. And I know they'll continue to support our budget work as we move it forward to the next level. So I just want to acknowledge that in spite of you being a brand new board, you are working hard together under Dr. Fletcher's leadership, and I do so appreciate that. I do owe you cookies. However, I didn't want to upstage any of these other goodies. So stay tuned for the next board meeting. You'll need it then, right? It'll be a little fresh, a fresh uh, treat. So I will turn it back over to Dr. Fletcher.
Okay. So at this time, I'm going to open for any board comments. And I promise that I will look on the screen to find out if our two board members that are virtual raised their hand. I missed them last time. Ms. Wagner.
Give it a go. Okay, here we go. Sorry. Sharing is caring. Um, I just wanted to say thank you. The these gifts are so touching. Um, I have um, as many as you know, I I am a teacher and I have um, some of the gifts from the past two years, the cards and the things hanging up in my classroom, just kind of as a reminder to me of why we do what we do. Um, and um, this weekend on Saturday, my husband and I got to go see the show at the high school, which was spectacular. Um, and it was just another reminder of why we're here and how amazing um, Newington students are and and how proud we are of everything that you do. Um, I wouldn't be sitting at this table myself if I hadn't have gone to Newington Public Schools and chose to live here and and raise my boys here. And I'm so excited to watch them, you know, walk through some of the same hallways I walked through and get the same experiences. Um, you are amazing students, and we do it for you. And um, thank you for for these tokens of your appreciation. They are so sweet, and um, I will certainly cherish them. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver? Push your button. There you go.
Ooh, green, green light. Okay, cool. Um, I always find this one like to to be so funny because we as a board, we we do this, we volunteer, and it's always weird because I'm like, we don't need this recognition. But I selfishly love this because it gets to absolutely not only you you give us sweets and stuff, but it caters to uh, we get to see a lot more of the the Newington community and our students. So I love that because um, one, it shows not only your creativity, but also how awesome our student councils are as a Stuco alum. Um, the Stuco blood runs deep. So I I get really excited just to be able to not only see your faces and hear you, um, but also uh, thank you for thanking us. I don't know. It's just really nice to be able to see that. Um, our student councils are 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 really engaged and um, have the most creative senses of ideas. So thank you. Um, it's really a pleasure to be on this board. Like Beth said, um, you know, this was my home for many years, as in the whole is of every school I've went to uh, through Newington Public Schools. And um, we do this because we love our schools, and I wouldn't be here without my Newington education. So um, it's just great to continue to see the progress that's being made, um, leaps and bounds ahead of further where I even was. Um, so we continue to make progress, and I think that's really what we're all here as a board to do. So it's my pleasure and my honor to be there. And um, I just want to thank everyone on the call for not only your eloquent speaking, um, but as well as your your incredible gifts. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Paradi?
No, I do not want Beth's microphone. Thank you. Yeah, I just want to say thank you so much. This is my first time on the board, so I'm very excited and very um, surprised with all the gifts. I'm going to have to hide the candy from my children. But um, but yeah, thank you so much. And to all the students who spoke today, we appreciate you. Um, so continue to do a great job. And um, yeah, I'm happy to be here and, you know, just happy. Thank you.
Ms. Dros?
I'm going to keep it quick. Thank, thank you, everyone. Um, it was so sweet. I, this is my favorite day being on the board. Um, I love chocolate, but more importantly, I love seeing everyone and hearing from everyone. So thank you.
Brenda.
I know. I'll talk from this far away. Um, yeah, just, you know, it's funny, Ms. Weaver said, you know, we don't, we don't need this, and selfishly, we do like it at times. But honestly, um, a couple of days ago, I think it was two days ago, I take pictures of all the things, and then I get the reminders yearly of everything that we got. And I got to be honest, sometimes we do need it because sometimes, you know, we're all away from our families right now. Um, there's a lot of work that goes on throughout the weeks when we're not sitting at the table. And all of our reasons are for everything that everybody said, the students, the teachers, this community. So it is nice to just see that some, you know, appreciation came our way because, not because we need it like for our own egos, but just because we we're glad to know that it's noticed. And we're glad to know that this community recognizes that we're trying to do something to make this community better. And with that said, that also means that if anybody on the call, whether you're a student, teacher, parent, if there is anything that anybody at this table can do to make the education system better in this town or make this community better, you know, we are your advocates. That's how I've kind of started to look at this position now is is more that I want to be an advocate for the members of this community. And so um, so thank you for recognizing that. Thank you for all the students who spoke so great um, during this presentation and everybody that put in the work to just um, share this token of appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do our board members online? I don't see their hands raised. Ms. Yop, okay, go ahead, Ms. Yop.
Hello, everyone. I just want to say thank you so much for recognizing the board, and I'm sure I can speak for everyone in saying that we really appreciate this. I kind of got teary eyed. It is my first time serving on the board, and you know, everyone spoke so well, and I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate it. I see the gifts on camera. I think they're amazing. Um, yeah, this this has been an awesome and incredible experience, and I can't wait to continue to serve the students, the teachers, you know, the staff and the town. And I think um, yeah, I I appreciate this. This is awesome. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Sharma?
Hey, um, I just want to thank um, the board and everyone for the for the award. So congratulations again. Thanks a lot.
All right, and thank you. And uh, thank you for each one of you for all that you do, for what you contribute. I know it's a sacrifice of love, and there are some times it doesn't feel like a love fest. But it is a sacrifice, and it's just, we love the kids and we want to do what's best for them. And uh, I appreciate the recognition and the gifts that they give. I still have some of mine. I even, believe it or not, still have one of my plants. I've had it for a couple of years. So for me, that's a miracle. Uh, probably more of a miracle for the plant. But every time I see it, I think about the kids in the district and why I am doing what I'm doing. And so I it's worth it all. So thank you uh, to all of the teachers and the principals and all of the students for your recognition. We appreciate you very much. Okay, now we are going to be moving on to item C. And that is our time for public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. Uh, you can speak here in person. You can call us by telephone. The number is eight six zero six six five eight six five nine. And we do limit our civil participation to three minutes. So what we ask you to do is identify yourself by your name and the street that you live on when you do speak. And I don't see any coming in here virtual, so we'll go ahead and open it to you right now.
Rose Lyons, Forty Six Elton Drive. Um, it's nice to be back in the building. I wish that the conditions were a little bit better after two years of waiting. And I see the microphones are being shared and things like that, but I guess it's all new, so we'll work it out. Um, I want to thank Sophie and Dr. Brummett for sending the packets over to me by email. And I was delighted to see that Gabriella's name was listed as having, going to receive an award. I have known her parents, Jeff and Idalina, since they were students at Newington High School. I worked with the youth group leader at St. Mary's and I would not expect anything less from their children than what they were. They were very wonderful young adults and they're wonderful parents from what I can see now. The last time I saw Gabriella and Samantha, I believe, was at St. Mary's at church when they were in a little infant carrier. And your son, I don't know his name, I'm sorry, but I'm sure that he's going to grow up just like his older sisters. So they're going to be good role models for them. For, and I just, in listening to her read her essay, I was born in 1945. My father was in World War II. My uncles were in World War II. My brothers were in Vietnam and other places. One was not during wartime, but it brought me back to then, but it's also bringing me now to where we are today. And not only are your students going to need those social workers for what's happened in the last two years, they're going to need them for what's happening right now. And I thank you for what you do for this Board or for the school community. Idalina, are you still a teacher here in town? So you know, it just keeps going. I graduated in 63 from Newingtonheim. My daughter graduated in 98. She's not in Newington anymore, but a lot of her friends are still here raising their families. And that's a lot to say for the Newington School System and the people that grow up in this town that want to stay in this town. So once again, thank you very much for all that you do.
Thank you very much. Okay. And online, we have Mr. Tim Hut Wagner.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, if you can get a little closer, it might help.
Okay. Tim Hut Wagner, 32 Old Haste Street Lane, Newington. Good evening, everyone. Last Saturday night at Newington High School, I had the opportunity to sit in Row B and watch in person the Newington High School Theater production of Into the Woods. It was amazing. The show was three hours long and I want to go on the record and state that the students did an amazing job and that they are all very talented. This was my first time inside the high school and I was very impressed with the building and the auditorium. At the end of the performance, the seniors spoke about their time with the theater program and how it made their high school experience memorable. Hearing these students speak about the high school experience made me think about my time in high school and about the extracurricular activities that made me love school. In the grind of budget season, I asked that the Board members, what made their high school memorable and what made it great? Also to not cut extracurricular programs to the school system at any level, like the theater, like the theater for these students. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And next is Dana.
Hi, Dana Havens. This is Stoddard Avenue. I just wanted to say thank you to the Board too. Thank you for listening to me, arguing with me either here or on Facebook. And that's it. I just wanted to share my appreciation. Thank you.
All right, thank you for sharing. Okay. And if you guys don't mind, you could just put your hands back down on the virtual. I don't see any other hands raised, no calls have come in. So at this time, we are going to move on to item D. This is our Standing Committee information items. First up, we will bring in our student representatives, Vedicia Thakkar and James Vendetti, or Jimmy V, as he calls himself on here, Jimmy V. That's a basketball reference, by the way. Jimmy Valvano, famous coach. All right. So either one of the two of you can head it off.
Madam Superintendent, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, do we have a Board of Ed report for you tonight? Starting off, we have, as most of you know, apparently, um, the last weekend from March 10th to March 12th, uh, the NHS Music Department put on their production of Into the Woods and it was a massive success. Over a hundred students were participating in this musical and we, uh, the, um, the music department had a live audience, which was very, very special to them. They absolutely loved that. And a shout out from, to Dr. Brummett, from the music department, they thank you very much for the wonderful cookies. Just overall, overall, it was a phenomenal show. As far as the sports report goes, um, on the top of the list, we have girls' basketball. They won their semifinal game against Plainville, uh, against, uh, sorry, not against Plainville, at Plainville High School on March 14th. Yes. And they will be advancing to the finals at Mohegan Sun sometime this weekend. Uh, as far as cheer goes, the team is, uh, the team came in eighth out of 20 teams at the state competition on March 5th and cheered at the girls' basketball games, the, the girls' basketball semifinals game on March 14th. You wouldn't have thought I wrote this. Boys swimming and diving, as far as their team goes, the team came in third at conference and has eight swimmers going to states with seven in individual events. As far as spring sports goes, preseason practices are underway. Most sports have already issued their, the preseason meetings. And sports will start officially starting within the next two weeks. Also, sports, uh, spring sports registration is now open and spring sports will be starting soon, as I previously said. Michael Bulkey broke a new school record in a mile with a 414, which is very impressive. Um, and as far as, as far as the lacrosse team goes, uh, both the boys and girls teams have been having indoor practices for the past 10 weeks at All Access Sports in Plainville. Upcoming events include, um, well, this March 14th, this Path Tuesday, which I believe, yes, it was a Tuesday. Project Graduation had their Port of Vortices fundraiser. Today, Ms. Tiggo's leadership meeting, um, this, sorry, I mean, yesterday, Ms. Tiggo had a leadership meeting, um, with the student leadership committees such as class officers, officers of various clubs, um, as well as the Stuco officers. Tomorrow, March 17th, is Shamrock Day, um, which in honors, in honor of St. Patrick's Day. And students are to wear green and gold and post a picture. And if your, um, if your picture is picked to be the best picture, then you can win a gift card prize. March 22nd, the names can really hurt us, Assembly is, is going on for sophomores. We will have another, uh, another Assembly on April 5th. It was organized for the junior class as they were unable to have one last year. March 23rd, the, uh, is Wacky Wednesday. This Wacky Wednesday is Wacky Hair Day. On the following day, March 24th, juniors were going to have their SAT day, which I believe is a half day. Um, and from the 23rd to the 24th is parent teacher conferences, and those are both half days. As far as clubs go, Student Council is working with the Yearbook Club to create staff superlatives. In fact, actually, I believe we, tomorrow is the deadline to submit those. We sold candy grams and lollipops from February 9th to February 10th for his money for child and brain cancer at Connecticut Children's Medical Center. And this will call, this coincided with Gray and Gold Day, um, uh, that week. Shout out to everyone who participated. Uh, the difference between, the different, the different committees are working to get the ball rolling for all their different projects. Example, Service Committee is starting an initiative to collect all the plastic water bottles in the building to recycle and donate all the proceeds to a charity of the committee's choice. The Spirit Committee has continued to keep up the school environment by redecorating hallways with Valentine's Day theme for February and will redecorate for, for more of a spring theme next month. A Diversity Club had a meeting yesterday, Tuesday 15th, and it, they, it was about the updated dress code from Miss Free.
Um, I'm going to continue talking about the different clubs at our school. So Deca competed at the state competition and this year it was virtually on March 1st and we had 12 out of 17 competitors placed in the top five, which is really impressive. And those placed in the top three have the opportunity to attend the national conference in Atlanta from April 22nd to the 26th. And I believe we never got the chance to share with the Board about our trip to Florida, but we all had an amazing time and Jimmy and I had the opportunity to go and Ms. Miller and Ms. Anna, who are the chaperones and who organized everything, did an amazing job making sure we were all safe and had a wonderful time. And the conference was also very meaningful. We also decided on a new name for the school store, the Storm Supply. And we've been having a March Madness Sale going on since last Thursday and it's going to go to Friday. Debate Club, we are having our next meeting on Monday and the topic will be Wheels versus Doors. We've had great participation and student interest in discussing different controversial topics. Woman Leadership is also working to make changes to the dress code and just bring overall awareness to any issues that affect students at our school. Coach A Club has been holding regular meetings and receiving great public, uh, student participation. Yearbook Club is working extremely hard and the seniors really appreciate it. They recently put out a form for seniors to vote on superlatives and they gathered the winners and gave them all certificates and they're finishing up the rest of the book. We also really appreciate Broadcasting Club. They've been working really hard to make sure all the sports events get broadcasted. They recently broadcasted the girls' semifinal game and the boys' hockey game. And then GSA, Beyond Meetings have been happening and these, at these meetings, they've been focusing on finding LGBTQ plus resources and community beyond high school. For the academic section, uh, we have two National Merit Scholarship finalists, Jonah Borup and Bryce Turner have advanced as finalists for a National Merit Scholarship. National Honor Society had a blood drive on March 4th and we received incredible participation from students and faculty to both donate and volunteer to run the drug supply. We had people in and out all day and everyone was so happy to donate. We were really amazed. Science National Honor Society has also been having their regular monthly meetings. We've had guest speakers, um, every meeting, uh, who share about their experiences in the field of science with all the students. And Triumph received great student participation for ushers at the musical and selling tickets at the box office. And then lastly, um, this is just a message from Mr. Rajiv Desai, who presented it to the Board of Ed about adding the volley to the school. He has requested that I invite you all to the Voluptum Temple's Holy Celebration on March 20th. It starts at 12:00 PM and for those of you who don't know, Holy is a festival of colors and it's just about having a fun time and celebrating with your friends and family. And there will be colors, food, music, dancing and much more. And people typically wear white on top, so when you play with the colors, uh, they can be seen. And I think that is everything for today.
Okay, thank you for the both of you. Now, any Board members have any questions for either of them or any comments? Ms. Weaver.
Quickly, I just want to say, again, so comprehensive, wow. But also want to recognize that our Board, our representatives did not mention that they too were part of those top performers in Deca. Jimmy was like third and Vedicia fourth, so just want to recognize them on their own accomplishments. And then also just echo previous sentiments about the musical. Uh, I think all of us were there, uh, at one time or another. I think Ms. Perotti was right behind me and I didn't know. But also want to give a special shout out to our Board member, Ms. Dros. On her children's accomplishments in that, um, don't want to take this over, but I think in this section, it, it's pertinent that, um, it's just an incredible performance. We all enjoy the arts and also just huge congratulations. There's, it just feels like everything's happening right now. I feel like the nor'easter is upon us of just the energy here. We have so much going on with sports, with girls' basketball, guys' hockey. I mean, there's just so much going on and I think, um, this kind of energy, it's just a wonderful time to, to recognize all of the accomplishments, but it really just shows how much hard work these students put in. We have so many incredible student athletes, uh, student performers. They're not just academic students, they are fully holistic students. So I think, um, thank you both for not only emulating that as our Board reps, um, we know you're involved in everything. So just want to thank you and also update, um, last thing, Curriculum Committee did not discuss dress code yet, so that'll be on the next, but perhaps we can collaborate with our, um, our Women in Leadership and other groups that are discussing these policies. Would love your input as well. So thank you guys for a great report as always. I just didn't get to it, I'm sorry. It was on the, it was on the list, yes.
Anyone else? Okay. So thank you for, both of you, for the reports that you have brought. Keep up the good work. And we also, there was a committee meeting tonight on the Board Policy, the Board Policy Committee. You're the Chair. Do you have a report that you want to bring?
It's going to be a quick report. So we actually asked Mr. Farisi to talk to you about presenting the whole policy process because I think it's important for us all to know what's going to happen. But a synopsis, um, he gave us this great, um, it was a policy review prompt and it was to make sure that we were looking at the lens of the policies in an equitable way. And so we went through one policy and we came up with some ideas. So we're going to present, um, the naming facilities policy. We started with an easy one and then, um, we kind of ran out of time because we talked. It was, it was extensive. It was a good conversation about equity and, and making sure that our policies were equitable. So, um, Mr. Farisi will talk to you about that.
Excellent. Yeah, I look forward to that. I think it's a great idea. Okay. So moving on, we're going to go to item number E and it's new business. And I'm going to turn the mic over to Dr. Brummett.
Thank you very much. I am thrilled to introduce our Student Safety Patrol from Elizabeth Green School. I do know that I saw Mr. Marciano on the line. I don't know if any of his students are still on the line, but he will tell you all about the amazing safety patrol that is unique to E-Green and the role that Dan Velagas, our school's security officer, played in the development of the safety patrol. It's all yours, Mr. Marciano.
Awesome, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Again, Jim Marciano, Principal over at Elizabeth Green. Dr. Brummett, if you could just hit the presentation, because I don't think I can present. So I, I'll share quickly. I do have some students on here who are, are very excited to share with you their, um, some of the work that they've been doing. But I wanted to kind of give you some background on how this all came to be. And I will just talk through that. Nope, that's not it. I could just share it with you quick, would that work?
Did you send? Did you send the presentation to?
Lindsay was on it, so I just assumed it was there because it was linked. I just shared it with you again.
Oh, okay. Let me go to my email. Give me one second.
Yep. So while she's pulling that up, I just, I have to start by saying, everything I'm going to share with you tonight really, um, is the, is the work of, of Mr. Dan Velagas, who is our school's safety officer, security officer. He has done an amazing job bringing this, uh, this concept to life. I had mentioned it to him, uh, I think early at the end of last year, we, I talked a little bit about, uh, doing a safety patrol and he had already had ideas. He had already made steps in, in, in getting that process going, uh, before we even sat down to talk about it. So I have to give, uh, a lot of the, all of the credit really to, to him in terms of all of the work that's been done to get the students, um, uh, selected and, and, and going with, uh, the, the program and how it's running. So, um, I'm excited to share with you that. And Mr. Velagas would be here tonight, but, uh, he could not, uh, cancel on his wife. It's her birthday, so, um, I, I gave him a pass this evening. So, uh, if we can just go to the next slide, I kind of did that introduction a little bit. So, uh, the purpose of our safety patrol, what, what we really wanted to do was build an opportunity for students, uh, to demonstrate leadership, uh, capacity within the school, so that they can show responsibility, uh, they can demonstrate, uh, opportunities for taking care of other students. And we have safety patrollers that ride the bus. We have them, uh, that work in the hallway. They help outside at arrival and at dismissal. Uh, and we're, we're looking to expand, uh, their, their role, uh, when we start doing assemblies, having them help there, um, and even thinking about ways to get them out to the community. Next slide, please. So, uh, you could see here some of the benefits of the program. Obviously it helps us out in the morning and in the afternoon. We have people in the hallways directing students where to go. We have safety patrollers at every corner of Elizabeth Green, which is essentially a big square. But they direct the students to their classrooms. They, uh, help them off the bus. They make sure students aren't stepping off into traffic. They're kind of directing, uh, everyone. If there's a lost student, they help them get, uh, they, they help them get to their, their classroom. So there's a lot of work that goes into it. They have to, they have to spend time, uh, doing some learning, um, and then demonstrate a lot of these characteristics, uh, which we talk about responsibility, leadership, teamwork, self-pride, citizenship and respect. And a lot of this part- And a lot of this part of the, the presentation that I'm sharing with you is really what they went through just when we introduced the program to them. So this is kind of the precursor for them to kind of learn a little bit about what the program is. So that they can then decide if they want to move forward with, with the program. Next slide, please. So these are the characteristics we look for. Obviously, leadership is a big part of it. They follow the rules. They're reliable. You know, they have good attendance, they're respectful, and that they have a willingness to help all. One of the things that's important as a Safety Patrol member is that you're, you're responsive to people as you interact with them. So when kids are walking into the building or adults are walking in the building, they're saying good morning. They're greeting people as they're walking by. They're saying hello. Just to create that community, that, that, the excitement of being in the building and being part of the community. Next slide. So there's a lot here. I'm going to take you through the, what, what the steps were because this is just kind of what we went through to get there. So our Safety Patrol Advisors, Mr. Velegas, they had an overview, which is what I gave you, kind of the, the short version of it. Each of the students had to fill out an application. They participated in a panel interview. And then we had a very difficult time selecting who was going to be a Safety Patrol, which I'll go over a little bit more. And then they had some training and then we, I'm going to, let me just go to the next slide. We'll go through this in detail with some of the actual examples. So the first thing that they had to do was create a, they had to fill out an application. So this is one example. And I'll read to you what this particular student wrote because it's a little hard to read. My classmates respect me. An example of this, one of my, example of this was when my classmate, and there was a name in there, said, "I would be a great treasure." "I promise to report to duties on time and follow the school constitution. I will be a good citizen and set a good example." "I notice a lot of details that other people don't. I can keep people safe that way. I believe that it is important to listen to the teacher's directions." "When my teacher tells us to," and if you click to the next slide, "walk in the hallway, I always listen. Finally, I often help people pick up toys from recess when other kids don't." "It is important to keep school grounds clean and safe." So on, in order for them to be a Safety Patrol, they had to get it signed off by both their parent and, and their teacher. So that was the first step. So they, everyone submitted applications and then we decided from the applications who we were going to interview. If you go on to the next slide. We did a panel interview. Mr. Velegas had sent out information to both parents and teachers. And then some of the questions that they had to answer, again, for fourth, imagine a fourth grader going into an interview. Most of the interviews were done, interviews were done by Mr. Velegas and, and one of our secretaries, or I joined in. So some of the examples of, you can see some of the examples of the questions. If you are a bus, if you are a bus-assigned patroler and notice an unfamiliar student is getting on your bus, what would you say to that student? You know, your patrol, your patrol post is located in a very busy hallway. You see a younger student running down the hall to get to his or her classroom. What would you say and how would you react? And then the follow-up to that was next day, you see your best friend running down the hall to get to class. What would you say? How would you handle this situation? So obviously, they had to go through that process. The nice thing about this is students had to report during recess, so they had to be responsible to know what time to report. Because the interviews were like five to seven minutes long and they had to be on time or they would have missed their interview. So that was just, we're trying, we tried to make it as real life as possible. Next slide, please. So here's where it got really challenging. Our, our goal was to start with 15 students. And we had 24 applicants and they, they all did a really amazing job in the interview and just, you know, showing up, answering the questions. So we, we had to make some really hard decisions. So I left that up to Mr. V. I said, you know, Mr. V, this is an important job for you. You can tell which kids, you can tell the kids that aren't going to get the job. I'm going to leave that one for you. Actually, that's not, that's not actually what happened. Next slide, please. So, Mr. V and I, we, we came to the, we came to the hard conclusion that we weren't going to be able to cut any of the kids. We weren't, we weren't cut out for that kind of work. So we decided to take all 24 and find ways to use all of them in, in the Safety Patrol. So students participated in three sessions of training, which again was done during recess. They had to, they went through the whole process. Mr. V went through a variety of different responsibilities that they had. And they had to complete all of the training sessions in order to get to the next stage. So next slide. So then it got really fun for them. We had a ceremony where they were given their Safety Patrol belts, which you can see are in yellow. Dr. Brummett, myself, and Mr. V presided over the ceremony. And at the ceremony, they got their, their belts and then they also got these Safety Patrol badges. Next slide. And one of the cornerstones of the, of the, of the, of the Safety Patrol was to recite the pledge, which you can see here. I'm not going to read it to you. You guys can read it. But to just kind of, this is the honor that you're going to take and, and, and use and implement as a Safety Patrol, a Safety Patrol leadership member. Next slide. So here's just some examples of where the kids might be stationed throughout the school. You can see that is our pickup area. That is one of our students who was on the line tonight. That's Albert. We have Liam and we have Tyler, who are just directing students in different places to go. Next slide. Here they are again. This is the front of the school. Some of them are in the front of the school where the buses load. And then you can see a number of them pictured here with Mr. V. Next slide. Recently, we started taking nominations for sergeants. So our first sergeant was selected by her peers based on the popular vote in this case. Ava Laqueeve. I think Ava is still on the line. She was on the line earlier. Ava is, was our first sergeant for the Safety Patrol. And Mr. Velegas needed some, some, some more help with being a sergeant, so he selected the next person. If you go to the next slide. We have Liam. I don't think Liam was available to meet with us tonight, but he also is a sergeant. And then, next slide, please. And then finally, just some media recently. I think on one of the snow days, I remember it being, being a snow day, Channel 3 did a local community story. And then we were the, the, the front page of Newington Life for the March edition. So if you hadn't had a chance to check that out, that is online also. So that is the, the E-Green Safety Patrol. I do have three of our members with us tonight. I think I have Ava. Ava, if you're here on mute.
Hi.
Hi Ava. And I also have Albert Garcia. Albert, if you're still here, unmute.
Hi.
And then I, and then I have, oh, Rachel. I'm sorry, Rachel. Oh my goodness, I'm blanking. Rachel, 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 Rachel Abraham. Sorry about that, Rachel. Yeah, you're, I was calling, I was going to call you Rachel Martin. I don't know why. And I have Rachel. Rachel, you still on the line? Awesome. So, board members, I figured I'd offer an opportunity if you wanted to ask them a question or two. I told them to come prepared with saying, you know, something they liked about the Safety Patrol, something they learned from the Safety Patrol. So if you want to hear from them, I thought it'd be a, just a good idea to, to kind of talk to them a little bit, get their perspective.
Anyone want to ask?
I'm ready.
Oh, first of all, congratulations to all of you that are on the line, that are in the Safety Patrol and that got the job. That is pretty amazing. I am very impressed, especially because I know that pickup drop-off time at any school is crazy for adults to manage. So the fact that you all are out there doing it with a smile is beautiful. So my question for you is, what is, what do you think is the most difficult part of your job and how do you handle that?
Who would like to answer first? Who's, who's talking? Is that Ava?
Yeah.
Okay, Ava, go ahead.
Um, the most difficult thing is definitely in the morning when I'm taking attendance with everybody is like, just like everybody like not hearing me or, or, or not listening. And how I deal with that is I, I try to get, I try to get everybody's attention and whoever's paying attention, I try to have them help out and just try to get everybody's attention by doing that.
That's awesome.
Rachel or Albert, do you want to share?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Albert, is that Albert?
Yeah. Um, when students are like having a fight.
Okay, and what do you do about that?
Um, so I will find out what's happening and then I'll like, I'm talking through to see what can we do like to figure it out.
Awesome. How about you, Rachel? You want to answer that?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I think the most difficult part is just me waking up in the morning.
Can she talk closer to her bike, Mr. Marciano?
Yes, Rachel, if you could just lean into the computer a little bit.
Okay. Um, one thing that will be really hard for me is just waking up in the morning because I really get grumpy because I want to sleep in. So I really push myself to get ready.
So I didn't mention that. All of our Safety Patrols have to be at school early so they can get ready for their posts. So they're there before all of the other students. They get there between eight and 8:15. And then they, they hang up their stuff. They do all of this on their own. Again, it's their responsibility. Mr. Velegas, they're supervising. But they, they get ready and then they go to their posts and get, welcome everyone for the day. So great, thank you, thank you. Any other questions? Do you guys want to share quickly what you love about the Safety Patrol or what you like about it or what you learned from it? Ava, you want to start?
Uh, sure. Um, what I like about it, um, Safety Patrol is because I like it because I get to help other students.
Awesome, thank you.
And I just love doing that.
Awesome, thank you. Albert, how about you?
I like Safety Patrol because, um, like Ava said, like we can help our students like when they're lost and like they need to find their classrooms and stuff.
Awesome. And Rachel?
What I like about Safety Patrol is kind of like what Ava and Albert said is like, I love helping children out and I'm asking them.
Okay. Well, thank you, Rachel, Albert, and Ava for coming and sharing and I appreciate that. Board members, if you have any questions for me, please feel free, but we're really excited about it. We're looking to expand it next year and again, increase the responsibilities.
So, Mr. Marciano, before the students sign off, I thought I was being all kinds of slick tonight by having, we have an everyday hero. And we thought he might be on the line tonight, but nevertheless, I'm going to let you know about it and the students. And then maybe we'll surprise Mr. Velegas later in the week. But Mr. Velegas has been nominated for an Everyday Hero Award because of his role in organizing this Student Safety Patrol. And I think the board now tonight knows how valuable that is. And a quick update of, of this is that he's done a phenomenal job getting Safety Patrol up and running at E-Green. The fourth grade students are proud to be part of the team and are making every effort to be role models throughout the school every day. Many of the members arrive at school before the bell to assist with morning duty. These students are a great addition to our parent drop-off area where they enthusiastically greet children and escort them to class in some cases. So all the children on the line, Mr. Marciano, because of your collective efforts, where your, Mr. Velegas is being acknowledged because everyone is so impressed with the Student Safety Patrol. So what a great acknowledgement for Mr. Velegas and your entire Safety Patrol team. So thank you, Mr. Marciano, and all the students that were able to join us tonight.
And thank you.
All right. I will turn it back over to you, Dr. Fletcher.
Okay. Now, okay, I'll turn it back over to you in a moment then. What I think we'll do is we'll hold our comments for these things. Unless we have questions that come up during these updates, we'll hold our comments until after they're all taken care of, okay? So at this time, we're going to look for an update on the Anna Reynolds Building Project.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. Tonight on the line, I do have Mr. Jason Smith and I believe we have Steve Woods. He's, he's excellent. I believe he's on location in Florida. So nevertheless, he very graciously is, oh, there he is. He's joining us this evening to provide an update about where the Anna Reynolds Project is. And we have a meeting tomorrow night, but he can give you cutting-edge information up till tomorrow night. Mr. Woods and Mr. Smith.
I'll go first because I can give you the update on the actual construction and where we are and Jason can kind of let you know, Mr. Smith, about what's happening in the building. We went out to bid March 2nd. There was actually 24 separate bid packages that went out on March 2nd. There was a pre-construction, pre-bid construction meeting on March 9th, which the construction manager holds on a project like this, which gives the parties that are going to bid it an opportunity to come, walk the school, take a look at it, ask any questions either there or take note and write down. That is going on right now. They will get the bids returned unless there is a postponement and the delay is put in for whatever happens because of quite too many questions that come in. But right now, the bid opening is slated for March 29th. So we're in a really good place. It's taken a lot of work from a lot of people to get this there. And we're very excited that come bid day or the day after bid day, we'll have this all tabulated and we'll be moving forward and construction will start this summer. With that, I think you want to hear from Jason first, but then I'll stay on it because if there's any questions.
Thank you, Steve. And we did have a great turnout for the first meeting and even with the snows on that early release day. So we had very, very good turnout and they had their second one and they have one more next week for the meetings in the building where people can go through and around. I wanted to start separate from the renovation. There's been so many celebrations tonight and congratulations to Gabriella Coltrera. Her mom is a teacher at Reynolds, but I wanted to mention because it made me go and look and the list finally came out for the UConn Writing Project. And at Anna Reynolds, we had 23 students this year that received awards, 26 awards. And four students are being published. They're students from Patterson, Martin Kellogg, and the high school. So I will get that entire list over to Dr. Brummett since it just came out officially today. Parents have been getting emails over the weekend and finding out about it. And I did want to also mention congratulations to Mrs. Paradi on the Board of Ed because Quinn was a recipient. So you'll be seeing her name come up at a future, future meeting. So just saw that list and very excited because that's the most winners that we've had in the Connecticut Writing Project. It's increased every single year over the past six, seven years. I think we've been doing it even more than that. Now to the Anna Reynolds renovation project. So there's been a lot of things going on. I did present the phasing plan to the staff and to parents and community members as well. And I sent that out and shared that with board members. So the phasing plan, we're now in the, next thing to phasing plan will be specifically meeting to looking up, looking at packing up the building for the end of the year so that after that last day of school, we can turn it over for construction and the abatement that needs to take place. So over the coming weeks, we'll be really fine tuning that packing plan so we can really ensure that that can happen after the last day of school. A few weeks ago, we had an interior design meeting with KBA, a subgroup of staff, six to eight staff members. Dr. Brummett, myself were a part of that to look over the design features of the building, interior design and patterns. And gave the, you know, thumbs up to Janet Wheeler's design plans for the building, including looking at the media center, different breakout spaces. Also recently had a technology meeting with Craig J. on our end and Dr. Brummett and Lou. And then went through every aspect of the building, every classroom, every office, every meeting room, breakout spaces, office area in terms of the specific. Office area in terms of the specific technology that is needed for the product, needed for each of those spaces, what technology we currently have. That we would be able to continue to use. Um, so that is um, kind of being taking place. So. Next steps, as I mentioned, will really be fine tuning that packing up plan, uh, to really be able to support. Uh, the staff to be able to pack up their rooms efficiently at the end of the year. Um, and then be able to plan for the temporary locations and that that some staff will move to. And then also starting to looking at identifying the specific furniture needs for each of these spaces. As these, um, as we move and be able to purchase those for as the wings are being completed. So. Um, also, I just wanted to mention that we had a couple of classrooms that had been pri- um, piloting the voice lift sound system. Uh, two first grade classrooms next door to each other and that would be going into, it's in the ed specs to go into all the classrooms. And that helps to be able to evenly distribute uh, this, the teacher's voice across the room. And I had the opportunity to talk to a first grade class that had been using it and the students and the teacher had been very pleased. Uh, with that, how this helped them to be able to focus or hear the teacher, particularly if they're in the back of the room. Um, it makes it, you know, very clear for the teacher speaking, goes through a microphone that they wear and then comes out of a. A speaker in the ceiling and distributes the sound evenly across the entire classroom. Uh, so that's just an update of some of the things that have been happening on my end in the building in relationship to the plan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith and Mr. Woods. I'll turn it over to Dr. Fletcher to field any questions or will that?
So are there any questions? All right, we don't have any questions from the board members. So gentlemen, thank you so very much for your update. Look forward to the progress.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Thank you both. All right, our next item is an update about elevator code compliance. Uh, I'm going to turn this over to Lou Jacobowitz, if he's available, to discuss a recent uh. Compliance evaluation that yielded a, a need for some upgrades to one of our elevators. Lou, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
All right, just speak right into that microphone and we'll turn it right over to you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, the reason we added this item uh, to the list is number one, because of the potential magnitude. Of the cost of the repairs that are involved. A few weeks back, we were uh, got a. Uh, once every four-year or five-year inspection by the State Elevator Commission. And at that time, they identified a deficiency based on a two thousand eighteen code update that was done. Which was related to the hydraulic system, which is what pushes the elevator up, lets the elevator come down. Uh, very s- simple uh, description of it is, uh, we have what's called a single wall system. At the high school and they wanted a double wall system. So if there was a leak of the hydraulic fluid, it couldn't escape. And have the unit lose pressure. And it, the elevator would, you know, not operate correctly at that point. So that was the citation uh, that was given to us. They also did a similar inspection at Martin Kellogg and gave us a citation for that as well. You know, the potential magnitude of repairs at each location is seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, but today, our uh, facilities director, uh, Jason Plum, uh, was able to get clarification. Actually, our Martin Kellogg elevator isn't compliant, so we only have one half of the issue to deal with. And that would be around seventy-five thousand dollars based on our uh, best guess right now. Uh, the uh, type of work that uh, is involved would be basically replacing the whole hydraulic system. Underneath the elevator car, so it's down in the elevator pit. Uh, this may require us going and requesting a bid waiver. Uh, because the uh, notice elevator uh, of its original vintage. And it's been, was retrofit fifteen, twenty years ago uh, by our current maintenance company called Thies and Crupp. And uh, since that was the case, I, we may be in a spot where we have sole source. That we're uh, Thies and Crupp is the only one who realistically can fix it unless we, you know, we're willing to pay a lot of financial amounts of money and. You know, basically buy a whole new elevator system. So we have to still evaluate that and uh. Uh, you know, that will be in the coming weeks, uh, figuring out exactly uh, what approach we would need to take. I would like to turn it over at this time and just ask our facilities director, Jason Plum, uh, to just uh, talk through uh, what we found out from the. Action process and the timing, uh, because of, say, we haven't got a citation of any assistance on an elevator in years. So um, I'd like him to just explain uh, when the timing of the inspections were done and when the code change went in. To Jason?
Sure, Lou. Um, my camera's not working on my phone, so I'll be voice only. But yeah, we recently had this inspection. Um, you know, the, the fifteenth. February and we were, a, a note on this inspection, I'll read it is, please note as of. Uh, January third of two thousand eighteen, Connecticut has adopted the, and it gives the type of code, which is what you just spoke of. The single wall, which is the old-fashioned to the new uh, required double wall. Um, you know, we, we, our last inspection was in two thousand eighteen at around the time the code was adopted. But you know, I have that in hand here and there is no mention of that particular violation. And as you said, the, the state comes out, um, you know, every few years, three or four years to inspect these elevators. Um, so yeah, we, this is a recent finding and it was good news today that we, we were able to determine that one of the violations was not. Uh, exactly accurate. We were in better shape than we thought, but we did confirm that the high school has a single wall and. We're getting pricing right now, uh, fourteen to sixteen week lead time on the materials. It's sort of specialized. And we should have pricing back by next week or so.
Okay.
Thank you. Any more comments, Lou?
Uh, it's just, you know, the magnitude, uh, the illustration of lead time we're facing with the significant specialized work that we hit. We would have to do in different areas. And uh, because we're in a potential sole source vendor situation. It may need to go to the town council for a bid waiver. But just an FYI for the board at this time, there's no action to be taken.
Thank you very much. And again, um, this is not because of lack of maintenance or anything. It's simply that the code requirements for the elevator. Were raised and they had different codes than what the elevator had in its makeup. So therefore, now we have to retrofit or add on different features to meet that compliance. But luckily, we thought it was two elevators. It's just one at the high school. Estimate is seventy-five thousand, but we'll keep the board fully informed. We will have to reallocate uh, money from the board CIP in order to pay for that emergency repair. Or unexpected repair. It's not an emergency. The operate, the elevator is functioning. So, sounds good.
Yeah, I would mention one other thing, Maureen, uh, Dr. Brahmit. Um, we, uh, though the, the elevator does not currently meet code, as long as we are pursuing. Um, you know, we're out and we're, we're, we're creating the proposal, proposals and we're purchase orders to the vendors. Uh, we, they wouldn't shut the elevator down on us. They just asked that we fix it as quickly as possible. Thank you.
That's a great point. There's a hand up.
Yeah, that just kind of follows along in terms of, one, is there any gap in use, but also is there any uh, monetary fine or anything in terms of. Uh, lack of compliance and in terms of timeline, how long uh, we have, obviously saying as soon as possible is. But is there a timeline you can be out of compliance for and the consequences of that?
Did you hear that, Lou?
Yes. Yeah, there are no penalties right now as long as we're uh, doing a good faith effort to uh, try to expedite the repairs. Uh, we do have the fourteen week or so lead time once uh, we get the proposal organized and. Uh, critiqued as far as the approach we have to take as far as the funding. So realistically, we're looking at four to five months at this point. Uh, it's only if we just abandoned uh, trying to do any repairs and they came back, where I think we would be at risk for. Uh, more uh, stringent citation and a possible fine at that point. But at this point, you know, good faith effort is all that's required.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, good evening. Um, so what happened to the uh, hydraulic system between two thousand eighteen? And now, or is it still in good functioning order?
Jason, you wanna answer that or you want me to do it?
Yeah, I can answer that. Yeah, yeah, it functions fine. Um, it's not a, it's not a functionality thing. Um, as time goes on, I guess, you know, codes, engineering codes become more conservative. And um, the single wall, as Lou put it earlier, it, it has one barrier to con- to contain the hydraulic fluid. And so if that one barrier fails and these, and this, this uh, container is a, it's a large cylinder that goes down like thirty feet into the ground. So you really can't, you clearly can't look at it and each day and walk by it and inspect it. So the elevator commission decided to go more conservative unless they must have had failures, which as Lou put it, the, the elevator can't function properly. And also, it probably isn't good to have, uh, you know, the hydraulic fluid flowing into the ground unseen. So they became more conservative over time and in two thousand eighteen, they said, all right, what would, what's the more fail-safe method? And that they determined would be two walls. So you, you have a, a double layered container. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Is there any way that we can get um, some kind of grandfathered in provision since this is like. Existing prior to the uh. Code change?
Uh, I'll speak to that. Uh, typically grandfathering uh, would not apply to uh, things that have a shelf life. Uh, you know, you know that the expected useful life of some uh, component of the system. Is only uh, realistically good for twenty years. Uh, they would not allow a grandfathering to allow it to stay in the. Deteriorating condition for, you know, an open-ended amount of time. Uh, you know, with the code updates in whatever the um, enforcement's not really the right word, the implementation of the code by the inspectors. Uh, you know, it takes that into account as far as the age of the elevators, the uh, general condition. Uh, of the entire system uh, to allow them to um. Move forward and uh, tell us, yes, you have to take care of this in, you know, short order here. Uh, it's not that they're gonna shut down the elevator on us because it's in perfectly working order. There's no defects as of right now. But again, a hydraulic system would be prone to deteriorate over the years. And once you get a pinhole leak and something like that, it'll just accelerate and the system will fail after not too. Uh, rate a length of time. So I, uh, grandfathering on that type of code issue wouldn't occur. It probably would be just fine if it was a, um, didn't have an implication of life safety associated with it. Where if the hydraulics failed and the elevator uh, either couldn't get out of the bottom of the shaft. Or, you know, had a hard landing at the bottom of the shaft because it's lost its hydraulic forces. Uh, they would, you know, um. Not want that to be the case. But if it was just a matter of uh, you know, a structural element that has no hydraulics on it. That would probably be an easy grandfather item.
Yeah, Dr. Fletcher, I just, I just seem to have a little bit of issues. Just seems like it's another unfunded mandate from the state, you know, and uh. It's, it's trouble, it's troubling to me as, as, as a taxpayer in Newington. Uh, I don't like it. This elevator functions completely properly. It was fine in two thousand eighteen. There's been no deterioration that's been noted by Mr. Jacobowitz. Um, I don't like it. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Yalp?
Hi, hi, everyone. Um, I'd like to address Lou, if that's okay, Dr. Fletcher.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, Lou, so you're saying the hydraulic system possibly needs to be repaired and I am for getting the elevator repaired, you know, um. I wanna ensure that, you know, the safety and security of everyone. Um, how soon do you think you can get um. A quote on what it'll cost to fix it? I know you said there's no timeframe, but I mean, safety and security. I have family who works for Otis Elevator and different things. So I know about, a little bit about elevators, but um, how soon do you think you can get a quote? And I mean, is it gonna be an expensive repair? Do you think that's something to bring um, forward to just show us? Because I, I definitely agree. I think it needs to be fixed. Um, sorry, Richard, I kinda disagree with you just a little bit. Um, I think safety is, you know, important in regards to things like this. I wouldn't want, I mean, I understand that there was no issue in two thousand eighteen. But being like a landlord myself, I understand that maybe there wasn't an issue in two thousand eighteen, but maybe there is one now. And we always wanna make sure that we're up to code and compliant on these things, especially if they're being used regularly by staff or students or whoever's using it. So is there, you know, do you think that's, my question again is, do you think uh, you can get a quote soon? Sooner than later, even though there's no timeframe on getting it repaired?
The answer is yes. Uh, we're waiting on a proposal right now from Thies and Crupp. Uh, whose elevator car and hydraulic system is what's currently in, at the high school. And then once I see that and well, the components are and uh, I would have to then uh. You know, figure out from the town side what they would expect from us for uh, bidding. If it's, they feel it's necessary, even though you really don't have a competitive environment for it, because you wouldn't have. The ability for many companies to be able to bid on the same thing. You'd have to change over the elevator system. Uh, in order to make it apples to apples. So, you know, from when we get that, within a couple of weeks. Where we would be able to, uh, you know, have a clear idea if we had to bring it to the town council. And get it in front of them for a bid waiver. And just the timing of meetings would really dictate. Uh, you know, once we get on the agenda there and if they're uh, reviewing at a meeting, say of first week of April. You know, the day after the meeting, we could place the order with uh. Thies and Crupp, if that was supported as a bid waiver. If it wasn't supported, we, we have to start the bid process. And try to expedite that over a four to six week period. And uh, then whoever's the winner. You'd have your fourteen, sixteen weekly time on materials uh, start kicking at that point. So, you know, we could, you know, it could be anywhere realistically, if without a bid waiver, probably be a six-month process to get it uh, to the finish line.
Okay, thank you. I have one more thing to say. Um, and just, it's a statement. Um, and I'm not sure if everyone's aware of this. But um, what, what he's talking about essentially is, you know, it's out of code. So yes, things still work if they're out of code. We all do understand that. Like I said, I am a landlord, so I know sometimes things are out of code and they still work. But we wanna make sure that things are up to code. I mean, essentially, we wanna make sure that everyone is safe and secure. And we don't wanna wait until the hydraulic system completely fails to fix it, because that would probably cost more than, you know, the minor repair now. So I do wanna, you know, commend, you know, I, I can't remember if the other guy's name, I apologize for um, you know, getting this inspected and getting this. Um, taken care of now before it becomes an even bigger problem. And like, he had mentioned, I don't know if everyone here, it, there's, it's not something you can actually get to. Obviously during the inspection, they do a more thorough investigation and they're able to actually, you know, detect this. But I think this is actually getting ahead of the problem, because although it may seem like a lot costing possibly seventy-five thousand. How much more would it cost if we wait until it completely breaks down, essentially? I mean, elevators are not, they're not cheap. You know, I'm not sure if everybody knows the cost of an elevator. Like I said, I have a family member who works for Otis. They're, they're very expensive. So um, I am gonna say thank you for, you know, getting ahead of the problem now. Um, and hopefully we're able to find, you know, a quote that works for the town and us and we can get the situation rectified. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Do you have a question?
So along those same lines, it's almost like we planned it, but I swear we didn't. Um, like moving forward, are there any? Other elevators in the schools? I mean, I know you said not, you know, there's other elevators within the school. Is there any other ones that are possibly going to be out of compliance? When the state does its elevator inspections, because they have to do that. And then also, is there any way that, um. Is there any data, that's not the right word, but um, where we could have known that this code had changed? Like, is there any place where we can stay on top of code changes so that we aren't kind of like, what the code changed? So those are my two questions.
Um, as far as the other elevators in town, uh, the elevator, yeah, Ruth Chafee. Uh, is a vintage of two thousand five, two thousand six timeframe. Uh, so it's sixteen years old. Uh, we've got no reports of anything uh, that's there. You know, certainly, the uh. You know, when an elevator is built and installed, it's built the current codes as of the day. So uh, that's not a particularly old elevator by any stretch. Uh, but you know, as far as uh, being on a, a work uh, notification system from the. Uh, elevator uh, bureau at the state, we would have to check in with them and see if they offer anything like that where, wherever there's. wherever there's uh updates or announcements or changes to code issues where they just broadcast emails to everybody about what's been changing. Now, uh, I don't have the expertise to know how to critique uh every code document uh in these areas uh to do that with uncertainty. So uh we would have to, you know, we do have annual inspections done by decent crop as part of their service contract uh to keep the elevators in good running order. So uh, you know, they did not notify us of this issue uh themselves. And I, Jason and I were talking exactly about this topic today about uh, you know, what is our expectation of them as our service agent to keep us ahead of the curve instead of catching up from behind the curve? So when we get our proposal a week or so, we'll be, you know, having that kind of a conversation with them about uh, you know, going forward, how we would uh do these things. Okay. Uh, we also have uh the mini lifts over at Elizabeth Green, which are the same vintage, two thousand five, two thousand six, uh along with the Kellogg elevator and the high school elevator. Um, we will have an elevator in Reynolds once the project is complete. There are no elevator John Patterson. And uh, as of right now, nothing with John Wallace.
All right, uh, Mr. Sharma, do you have a question?
Yeah, I got I got a quick question for Lou, uh, Dr. Fletcher.
Go ahead.
Hey, Lou, is this is this because of a simple like code change? Or is it because um the elevators were not like, is it was it was a lack of maintenance or were they like beyond their useful life? Or is this simply because the the state didn't to state did inspection uh the code changed? So we, you know, we basically got to fix the whatever, you know, whatever the defect is?
Correct. It's just a code change. They're the elevators are maintained on a regular basis uh by uh decent crop around the district. Uh, so there is no uh shortcomings of uh keeping them in good working order. You know, code issue uh dating back to two thousand eighteen. You know, it's hard to know exactly uh the chain of communications coming out of the state going back over four years now. Uh, but we haven't had a visit from them for about four years. So uh uh, it could be, you know, nothing more than, you know, they changed the codes and we just have to react to them is all it is. There's no uh, nothing's wrong. There's no imminent failure. There's no uh lack of maintenance right now. It's just uh, it's time for an upgrade.
Okay, I mean, so this this this, so the state just showed up after four years and then basically a code change. And so we we need to comply. It's not because of like, it's not because of lack of maintenance. It's not because it's beyond its life. All right, thanks, Lou.
Mr. LeBarre.
May I address uh Mr. Jack Moats? Um, I mean, and again, I'm I'm harping on this because it's functioning properly. What happens if we just don't comply with what the viol- uh with the notice of violation? What happens if we just don't do anything?
Well, uh, I, you know, uh, Mr. Plum, we have to read the violation sheet as far as what the expected uh uh follow up requirements. I didn't actually look at it with him. We were just talking about it. But you know, we have a good faith effort of trying to aspire to complete this in a reasonable timeframe. And by our good faith measures would be uh following the process, we need to be in compliance with town purchasing rules as well as issuing a purchase order and funding it properly. Uh, the timeline of waiting for those materials to show up and having a contractor to properly is just part of the overall process. If we were to disregard the uh citation at this point, uh, you know, I would not want to support anything like that as far as uh making choices that are specifically contrary to what we've decided for. Uh, but it would be, you know, putting the board in harm's way of a conscious decision not to comply. And that would not be uh really anything want to see happen to anybody because uh, you know, we're looking out for the kids. We're looking out for the staff. You know, we're looking out for everybody. And in aspiring to do that, you know, we are putting our best foot forward every day. So uh by reaching that trust of not following through unintentionally would be, you know, concerning. I mean, I couldn't tell you what the elevator would do, and I couldn't tell you how long it would take for them to catch up with us. Um, because non compliance, you know, there's, you know, part of the good faith is that they probably won't be back for a while. Uh, but they're counting on us to follow up and follow through to make sure that, you know, things that were identified were dealt with.
Okay, thank you. I mean, Dr. Fletcher, if this is something that we may not hear from the state for another four or five years, and it's something that's a five hundred dollar fine, I, you know, we don't know that information. Perhaps it would be better to disregard it, pay a fine. Again, I'm I'm harping on this because it functions properly. And e- even in the event of a failure, there's not a significant safety risk. It would just be an elevator that doesn't go up. Um, so I mean, depending on what the penalty is, it might just be a good idea to tell the state to go pound sand.
Well, at this time, it's not an item that we're uh going to discuss or vote on. So when it does come up, then, you know, you're more than welcome to share your opinion at that time. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Fletcher, if you don't mind, is that if the elevator does fail at the high school, uh, we're going to be completely out of compliance on all ADA issues uh because of building uh accessibility. And the elevator is a linchpin of providing, you know, uh accessibility for all students who are handicapped in the district, any programs that are located on the second and third floor of the building. Uh, also, if it fails today, we're sixteen to twenty-six weeks out from getting it fixed. So we're going to be out of compliance for that length of time. And we would have a variety of different issues to face uh as a result of that conscious decision.
Okay, uh, I don't know. Ms. Yellup, do you still have your hand up from previous or do you have another question?
I I have something to state.
Okay.
Um, can I go ahead?
Go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to make a comment, um, if possible. Um, I am not for um not complying with the state. I feel that we should comply. Um, I I do understand, you know, where the other board members coming from saying if it's not something we have to rush, and I understand where that comes from, seeing that we spent money on it on other things. But I mean, the safe, it's it's an elevator. Essentially, we we needed the elevator to work. I understand the codes change, but that's just like with everything else. Codes change, things need to be upgraded, and I am a hundred percent for, you know, getting it up to code. Um, I I hope that, you know, we can look at the different options, you know, as far as cost. But I am not for accepting a fine and just not going for, you know, just ignoring it. That's just not something I would ever even consider ever in my life. Um, so I am going to say I am for getting it fixed, whatever it takes. Hopefully we make the, you know, the best decision possible. If the students that are handicapped are using it, I want them to be safe. I want the staff to be safe. I want us to be safe if we use that. So that is a statement that I wanted to make.
All right. Well, thank you, and thank you, everybody, for your comments and the questions that you have asked. I look forward to the update and as we go forward. Okay, so we're moving on to an update of the budget of the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. And this is not an action item. I just wanted to update the board as to where we stand um in light of the initial feedback from the town manager. So um, you know, the slide is is current. I'll go to the next slide. At the end of our presentation, a few weeks back, the board voted to reduce the budget to three point six three percent. And that included reduction of the three ERP takers, reduction of a hundred thousand dollars in instructional academic supplies and thirty thousand dollars, just under thirty thousand dollars in building repairs. So that's where we landed, and that's what we forwarded along to the town manager uh on March first. Then I had promised the board I would keep them apprised of any changes to uh any of the pending issues. So I wanted to make sure I did that tonight. Uh, right now, uh, the ERP plan has closed, the timeline has closed, and we have three takers. So our total impact is expected to be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The impact of the budget freeze has been somewhat positive. We have uh reduced our reliance on the non lapsing fund. That was one of the goals of of freezing the budget and limiting expenditures. So but we do believe we will use about six hundred thousand, which is better than the two million that we had originally projected to use. So that's an important factor for the board. Uh, the budget inflation items, uh, I don't feel we can make any reductions at this time because inflation is still very much in play here. We've all gone to the pump and the grocery store and dealt with those issues. Uh, the choice revenue increase, it is still pending. Um, it's looking positive, but we're not going to know for several months. So that really we won't have any play out there. And attrition possibilities, uh thus far, these are all already known to the board. We've, we're going to reduce one position of a retiree and not fill a position in our technology department at this time. So those are the two that we're uh able to do, but that was already known to the board at the outset of the budget process. So um I'm pretty sure the board is aware that the town manager um reduced our budget in our increase to one point six nine percent, or instead of the two point seven million dollars that we asked at the three point six three level, the town manager is recommending that our increase is only one point three million. And, you know, I'm sure the board is wondering, well, what does that mean? So I put a little bubble over here. If we, I know our, one of the board goals throughout the budget process was not to cut staff, which I applaud and agree with. Uh, the top three lines are where we landed on staffing. And that's the percentages that we would need for increases, again, just to meet our contractual obligations, to fulfill the contracts that have been agreed upon and voted upon. The two at the top, the uh are voted upon by the town council, and the uh non union contracts, or not really contracts, non union agreements are really in keeping with what the town does. So these are all very much in line with what the town does for non union and what we're obligated to do by union contracts. So we needed from the town a one point eight nine million dollar increase just to meet our contractual obligations. So that's two point four six percent. So at this point, with the current cut, we would need a restoration from the town council of five hundred and ninety-two thousand one hundred and thirteen to avoid layoffs. So that's the real linchpin or critical number for the board to know about, what I'll certainly stress next week when Dr. Fletcher and I present to the town council. You know, that's basically, we can't meet our contractual obligations with only a one point three million dollar increase. That's just a very basic fact. The rest of these line items didn't change at all. You know, I think the board can appreciate, and you were very diligent. You know, we didn't have a lot of other increases. Everything was largely flat funded and significantly reduced. I wanted to then show the schema now that we know what's currently proposed. So if you look, if you look at where we would sit if nothing changes, last year we had a zero. This year, the proposal from the town manager is one point six nine. Uh, a bit of good news, there was an increase in our capital funding. So that eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars does represent full funding of our buses, some security monies, and then the obligatory one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that the town has to allocate. The roof uh repairs that were requested are baked in on the town side. I don't know how much of the town allocation will go toward high school roofs. We are in communication, uh ongoing communication with Mr. Chapman and Mr. Salamon. Uh, we have an active leak at the high school in the event center culinary area. Those those are new areas, but the roof is not new. So that's something I shared with the board weeks ago. We we're getting estimates. The estimates we've received thus far, if we were to re-roof all sections right now of the of the high school that are not a current roof situation, is about two point five million dollars. And that's the estimate that we received over the course of the last few days. The town manager and town facilities directors director are reviewing those and have are going to bring someone else to look at our roof, uh, I believe sometime later this week, to see if they can get a better price. That that price of two point five million does not align with state reimbursements. So that's a flat fee. It's the cheapest fee you can get. Now, perhaps uh there are other companies out there that may go cheaper. So that's where uh the town manager and the town facilities director will look at any other options that are out there. But that is what we think is a fairly good price, but I think getting a few more estimates is extremely wise. Uh, where I see some disparity, though, in the board versus town budget is while we are only going up one point six nine percent, the town is recommending or the town manager is recommending that the the town budget go up by five percent. So they were negative two last year. He's recommending three point one four. I I feel that's inequitable because we had a very, we had zero percent increase last year. And we can't even meet our contractual obligations at one point six nine. This budget on the town side reflects a five percent increase. Uh, we have no added staff. This reflects at least one added staff member, as I understand it. So I think if you look at it from an equitable lens, it's very concerning. The other thing that we have to be very cognizant of, and I think the town is already seeing that, when you have a significantly low budget increase, the next year, it's much higher. So you're going from negative two to plus three. That's a five percent increase. If we keep staying this low, and I certainly hope it doesn't stay at one point six nine, but if it does, we will, again, next year, have an even higher ask. And our ability to meet contractual obligations will go even higher because we're going to be backfilling. And we're already in that position right now because we had to use non lapsing money this year just to make ends meet, so to speak. So this is concerning uh and something that I plan to uh really hopefully bring home when I meet with the town council next week with Dr. Fletcher. And again, the board has seen this slide. I I believe it was how you, you know, helped you to make your decisions. If we do not get the full increase of three point six three, or at the very least, if we're not restored that five hundred and eighty some odd thousand dollars, then there's no question that this will happen. We will have some cuts to our services. You just cannot not meet your contractual obligations and not cut services. It's just that A plus B does not equal C. And the board saw this already. I will share this with the town next week. This is the reality of what happens if you start cutting positions. It's not a one to one correspondence. So if you cut a teacher, and again, non tenure teachers are the first ones that you have to look at by state regulations. You cut a pretty much an entry level teacher, you really only net about forty-four thousand dollars because they are entitled to unemployment benefits and other related costs. So, you know, to to close that five hundred and close to six hundred thousand dollar gap, you're looking at somewhere in this uh mixture of potential positions upwards of twelve positions. I if I use the average of maybe fifty thousand dollars. So if we cut salaries that netted fifty thousand dollars, it would be about twelve positions, and that's a lot. Um, you know, I think people in the room are very well versed in what happens if you cut a teacher. Class sizes go up, you may run into violations of IEPs. Wellness classes go up in size. We could have contractual violations because teachers have entitlements to planning periods and other contractual um things that we have to provide. And you you heard tonight about our social workers. If the if those are our chosen cut area, our kids are in desperate need of that support right now, and and frankly, so do so does our staff members. Administration, if that was to be a cut, then you have currently, we're already spread very thin about doing evaluations, reports and other mandates that continue to, you know, escalate. All of our curriculum and assessment processes would be interrupted. And um, you know, how we support the teachers and the administrators at the school level could be also impacted. If we cut secretaries, there are tasks that will go undone or be spread to other people. And we already are quite lean in all these areas. So people are already pretty much maxed out. Uh, custodians, we have over eight hundred thousand square feet here in our school system. We're already at a very high ratio of people to square footage. So adding to that would probably result in overtime issues or uh potentially less clean buildings. Our AT staff is um, you know, they manage our operations and services, gather gather data. They help us do all the state reports. Paris and tutors support students. We could be in violation of IEPs. Uh, if we cut drivers, we already don't have enough drivers. So I'll let you fill in the blanks there. Uh, nurses, we we only have one per school with the exception of a high school where we have two. So I don't think anyone would argue that having a nurse at every school was critically think anyone would argue that having a nurse at every school was critically important. And security officers, um, they play a huge role at our schools. You heard about tonight's, uh, presentation, but that's just the tip of the iceberg of what they do. So that would be a huge loss if we had to lose security officers. And again, I think it bears repeating that comparing Newington to similarly situated districts, we are not out of whack with what we are asking for this year. I, I highlighted in red because obviously it, it's at risk of not being 3.63%. But you can see, you know, I have got last year's data and this year's data. This year's data averages right now 3.69. We were at 3.63. If we go to 1.69, I think you can see we would be once again, as we were last year, the lowest increase in our DIRC. And again, everyone in our DIRC has similar issues, similar, similar, uh, concerns and needs. And, um, you know, we're fortunate that our health insurance rates this year are very favorable, but base contractual obligations just don't go away. That's just not lavish. It's not exorbitant. It's just making your ends meet. So basically, in summary, uh, we, Dr. Fletcher and I presented the town council on 22nd. Then there is a public hearing on the budget, April 5th. The town would need to adopt the budget and set the mill rate by April 19th. Then the board would have an opportunity after the 19th to meet, and this is one of our regular meetings, to reconcile the budget. And that's where we would get our final number and we would have to then grapple with, what do we do? If that final number does not close the contractual obligation gap, then Mr. Free, CNI and other administrators will have to sit down and issue layoff notices by April 30th because that is a statutory obligation where teachers, certified staff are, we are obligated under law to send them notification of their potential layoff by April 30th. If we do not do that, then there are ramifications for their legal rights and, and they don't, they wouldn't have to necessarily leave. They could fight it. And that would be a, a legal issue and a monetary issue that we are not gonna let happen. We can't let it happen. So that is really, in summary, where we currently sit. I mean, there's still ways to go yet, but I, I am concerned about that significant cut and the implications for for our work in the district. So I'll turn it back over to you, Dr. Fletcher.
All right. Thank you. Yeah. Question, Ms. Rose?
Yeah, I have a question. I just before, you know, I'm looking at your numbers and so you had made a comment, uh, Dr. Brummett, that our town was at negative two last year and now it's at 3.14. So the 3.14% is on what last year's budget was. So I don't think it's a 5% increase. So I don't want to go and be like, well, you guys got a 5% increase because I, I don't, I don't think that that is a true representation of what the increase is. So if we're gonna go and say to the town, like, you know, we need the money because we do, right? And we need to save our positions, which we do. I want to make sure that when we're, we're presenting the data and we're, we're making these statements up there, they're not giving us the huh, is that really right? Like, I don't want any person in the town going, huh, is that right? Because then we're gonna question everything. So I, I, I guess my question is, is when we say 3.14% increase on last year's town budget, is that on last year's town budget or the previous year's town budget?
I got that, I got that answer because I asked that question of the mayor. And that is a 3.14% increase on last year's budget. Because I said the same thing to her, uh, that, that looks like a 5% increase. And she explained that that was only a 3.14 on what last year's budget was, not on the previous year. Right. Yeah. Okay.
I'm absolutely not being, like, I just like, so we already have that, like, you know, we know that there's, there's a lot of people in the town who question the budget and what we really need and whatever. So I, I want to be clear on, when we make comments like that or, you know, make that assumption, I should say.
I was gonna get back to you and let you know that. We, we did some digging. Uh, Ms. Wagner?
Thank you. Um,
I want to turn your mic on.
I know. My assistant wasn't.
Don't pay him.
Yeah, really.
So my question was, um, because I, I don't, one of my concerns, I guess, is that if we take a huge cut this year, which obviously we don't want to do, what position does it put us in for next year? Um, you know, how much further in the hole are we going to be, so to speak? And it makes me just inquire about those staff members that were hired with those COVID monies. And I know that we brought this up before, but I just want to make sure I'm clear as to when those positions expire, so to speak, because it, I feel being in the education world, those positions are extremely valuable and the kids need them. And from what I've seen based on being on curriculum, we do have scores that are going up. We do have um, students that are making gains after a weird two years of education. So, sorry, my question is not clear. Um, so if that money expires, the COVID money expires for those positions, do we have to then put those positions into our budget for next year, which would make our ask higher?
We're fortunate. Next year, um, the bulk of those positions have another year to go. So the only ones that are up for consideration next year are the security guards. They, the four new security guards at the elementary schools are paid for by COVID relief monies. Um, as folks may recall, when we first started with COVID, the security guards played an integral role in mark, monitoring our isolation rooms. Uh, while that's no longer as much of a, a need for them to do, they've become highly valuable in other ways. But they are the one, the set of positions next year that would be most at risk if that, that grant money will likely go away. But we do have another year after that for the bulk of the educational academic positions.
Can I just follow up?
Go ahead.
Um, and about, and so what would the monetary kind of, what would the cost be associated with those positions? Because though I don't want to jump too far ahead, that is something again, like I, I'm very concerned about us digging this hole and that being a part of it and losing these positions, I think would be just detrimental to our kids.
So the, uh, security guards, I believe are about 40,000 each or thereabouts. So that's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars next year that we'd have to consider unless other grant money comes along or some other, um, opportunity. Or what goes back down? Oh, or gas prices come back down or, um, but the subsequent year, the cost of those salaries that are currently grant funded is about 1.3 million dollars. So, um, that will create a funding cliff. So we've, we will have to make some challenging decisions. I believe there'll be some attrition within that group of folks because some of those positions, uh, there are folks that may retire by that time or we may have other openings that just allow that to be, um, you know, like I said, kind of fall together nicely. But inevitably, there'll be some positions we're gonna have to have some hard dialogues about.
All right, thank you. Any more questions? Ms. Weaver?
Hi, do you think, just going back to that slide of the, uh, it's probably before the DIRC, um, but also just want to emphasize that one sticks in my mind because there's like, is it 17 school districts in our DIRC? Is that correct?
There are about 25 in our DIRC. Only about 17 responded to my survey.
Okay.
So that's where, that's where, how they were chosen because they answered my call.
Okay.
So, uh, yes, we are currently, you know, we certainly were the lowest last year. This year obviously is still in play. Um, if we were to go to that 1.69 and that sticks, then yeah, we would be the lowest again based on these numbers.
Okay, um, do you mind going back to the slide with the town increase? Um, my question is regarding the, um, change in, uh, yeah, thank you. Um, so it looks like in terms of, I just want to get clarification on one, the roof repair. Obviously, we have that, that change in CIP. Um, it would be helpful if we could get kind of what is absorbed, like you said, the buses, but, um, I know we had cut the roof repair, the 30K in, in our operating budget. Um, just to make clear, that is the said roof repair that's being absorbed by the town CIP?
Not repair. The only thing the town, uh, we believe will be helping us is the roof replacement at the high school. If we have roof repairs next year, um, and again, we prioritize the high school. It was identified by that townwide study that was done several years back. Um, there are other, I suppose there are other roofs that may leak. Uh, but we would have to deal with that through other means with other, I guess, just transferring from other lines as needed. But that, the CIP that the town has articulated through the 7.7 million, uh, we believe high school roof repair, we, we, we understand the high school roof repair is embedded in there. We just don't know how much.
Okay. Thank you.
More questions? See if we have any online questions here. Don't see any there. So thank you very much for the presentation and we will present next Tuesday to the town council. Um, you know, if, if you want, you can reach out to your town council people that you know, that you have a connection with. You can discuss this with them. Nothing wrong with doing that. You can also show up for the public participation. And if you want to speak, you could do that as well. Okay? Just because you're a Board of Education member doesn't mean you have to stay silent in the public. All right. So thank you so very much for that update. And with that, we're gonna move to item F and that is public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. Uh, you can speak in person here or via telephone, 860-665-8659. So, uh, Ms. Craig, you will let us know if anybody calls in. I don't see anybody here. So while we are waiting, are there any further remarks by any board members that you want to make right now? Ms. Weaver?
Go Nor'easters. Times two.
I like those remarks. All right. Well, we don't have any calls coming in. We, um, don't have any more questions that are here on Zoom. So at this time, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second. Back in.
Are you gonna second it, Mr. Brandon? Motion's bait and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Everybody on Zoom, drive carefully to get home.
Long day at work, so.